Yeah.
Tyler, Tyler texted me this morning to just call on when we're ready for the other stuff here, so.
Well, that's up next.
Yep, I'll give him a call.
You didn't get him a call?
Yeah.
Next, we are up to approve pay estimate number three for try eighty-four on the FEMA repair. That's one Reitzel's doing.
Try, hey, we're just starting on the drainage stuff here.
Okay, perfect.
So I got, I got you on my phone on speaker here for everyone.
All right, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
All right, perfect.
We're on try eighty-four. Pay estimate three.
Yep, that'd be the payout.
Okay.
Looks like nineteen thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars eleven cents payable to Reitzel.
I didn't have any questions, did you guys?
No. So you're making a motion to approve pay estimate three, Mr. Stecker? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by class, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous. Next, we have DD four FEMA repairs. And the first one we got is on our iPad is Reitzel excavating, is doing work for McCarthy, is that's what you have there?
Yeah, there's two, there's one for Lubinthal and one for Reitzel, both doing subcontracting for to help out the project for the parties.
Did Reitzel?
Well. What's that?
That's the one we give the bid to Reitzel first time, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
I believe Reitzel is just, I believe they're just trucking rock for them.
Yeah. But we'll have it, have it in the records of DD four that Reitzel was subbed in Zachary Lubinthal was subbed to do work.
You'd be fine with it.
Okay, I agree.
So do I have such a motion to approve the subcontractor agreements with Zach Lubinthal and Reitzel?
So moved.
Our motion by Stecker, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by loss.
So Tyler's Lubinthal or Reitzel's on it or driving on the wrong property then that we talked about last week?
I don't believe so because that they had dumped the rock. Uh, I believe it was still McCarty that they were placing the rock. That, uh, I spoke with them, that should have come to a stop.
You talked to Brian and Elaine, right?
I did, yes, yep, and then I talked to Evan McCarty and Morgan McCarty, both about, they were gonna move that seed trailer, they were going to clean up their CMPs and they were going to keep much tighter to the right of way along the ditch. And I believe all of those things have been happening.
I went, I was up there Sunday and the trailer's gone, but you've been by there lately? There's a pretty good section of beans that ate there because of that trailer was on the wrong side of the property.
That's, I could see that being, being a, an issue.
Then when they're running back and forth, they got that ground pack so tight and beans can do a lot of pushing and the beans wouldn't even come through the ground in some areas.
Yeah, I, in speaking with Brian, I think that's going to be a matter of um, uh, uh, years damage and then a future damage because of the amount of compaction.
I know they were running the edge of that creek with the skid loader too and they're hauling rock out, which they could have went out of the north end also too.
Yeah, from the contractor, I was hearing that the access wasn't the best to the north.
Yeah.
That was what they had, uh, that's what they had let me know their reasoning for traveling south.
Did you talk to Brian about putting another intake in where that dirt pile is?
I, yes, I've talked to Brian about the two surface drains that he wants, one on each side, Nathan had at least one of those staked but was aware of both.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I have a motion in the second on DD four FEMA repairs for subcontractors. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried unanimous. Next, we have a discussion for a potential DD sixty sub four tile improvement, set a date and time for an informal hearing, is that correct, Mr. Stecker?
Yeah, and Tyler can talk on this whatever he wants, but he had told me that they were ready with their information for this district that had requested an improvement project, so he wanted to set an informal meeting to kind of get a discussion with the landowners, get some feedback and kind of go from there, but
We're just setting up by the
North Sway City.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Yep, kind of straight north.
Yeah, and I can add, to add to that, I just want to make sure that, you know, with con, with construction prices and everything, that everyone is on the same page, I don't want to get too far into any sort of design if there's a potential for remonstrance. And this would also serve as a good opportunity to speak with landowners about potential wetlands and any wetland determinations and potential wetland conversions before something is, comes as a surprise to us.
It, it's kind of going above and beyond the code requirements, so.
But are you proposing to send a letter to everybody in DD sixty?
Yeah.
Is that your intent?
Yep. Like, it, I mean, DD sixty sub four, yeah, not, not the whole district.
Just sub four.
Yeah, I, I believe that, that has a separate schedule, correct?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So it'd be, it'd be notifying all the landowners on that tile.
So your motion would be to send a letter to all the people in DD sixty sub four on the probability of doing an improvement?
For an informal hearing, right, yeah.
What date works for?
Tyler, what date works for you or what you have in mind?
Talking here, I believe what the earliest morning that works for me would be the nineteenth, July nineteenth.
Get the letters out of tune, is that right?
I don't think it's a huge number of landowners.
We have that other sixty sub one at ten, that one, so.
That would actually probably be good because there's some that would cross over on both. Guess that'd be possible, it would probably work out.
So you want to do that eleven?
Can we?
Who's got?
That'll be after our bids, right?
The bids are on the chart.
Yeah, see, I got the
Who's got DD sixty sub one? In here.
McLaurin.
McLaurin, don't they?
Yeah. But, but there's some of the people that farm ground and own ground in sixty sub four also farm in sixty sub one, so they would be able to kill two birds with one stone.
Want to do eleven?
Eleven.
I, I think that'd be okay, would eleven work for you, Tyler?
The nineteenth of eleven, that works fine.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Stecker. We have an informal hearing on DD sixty sub one.
Sub four.
Sub four, I'm sorry, at eleven o'clock on July nineteenth. We'll have a second to his motion. I'll second your motion. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimous.
Thanks Tyler, anyone have any more?
Thanks for, thanks for accommodating me over the phone like this, guys.
Yep. Make sure
No problem, we'll talk to you later, thanks.
Happy, uh, those in the record. The subs.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Good.
Drainage repairs, Marge, I seen a flock of them in there again.
Hold on. Winner winner. I get the chicken dinner today.
That's pretty good. We saved your call.
Oh, thank you.
We didn't, we didn't take care of them. We didn't want to share.
Why'd you feel like you're special today?
Thank you.
Okay, Galen, you want to give us your repairs?
Uh, number twenty-seven, try one thirty-one, broken tile needs repair at Richard Frieders. And Cody Dormer's name's on it, so Cody will take care of it. And number twenty-eight, pack one, Ron Schaefer. That's when we talked that day in here with Tyler, when we went out and looked at that guy's field on the north side, we're gonna put those
Off slides.
Yeah, I can't remember who said they're gonna have to do that.
Reitzel's gonna do some for me on the same ditch.
That area?
Yeah.
Well, we'll put Reitzel down, otherwise I was gonna get, uh, Tilges, what's that? T M A.
T what?
T M A, next to T M A. If we can have Reitzel do it, means he's gonna be in there.
He's gonna be just north of it.
Well, just let Reitzel do it though.
Then you could just, well, do them all at the same time.
Dan, there's pictures in there.
Twenty-nine.
Same thing.
Mary Lubinthal pasture, talked to Cyberbot that that day, if Reitzel's, say Reitzel fix that then too.
Then you can get them all on the same sound line, save the trucking.
And we have number thirty, Todd Tilges. Uh, he just started farming that farm, he's on, uh, pack one. And his neighbors informed him that there is a tile missing. So you're gonna have to do some digging for, when they did the dig on, they did for the cleaner, the two back end. So he's gonna have to do some digging and see if he can find that, so Reitzel's in the area, I'll let Reitzel do that one. And number thirty-one, Art Mogler. He's on pack one, he's that one right north at Tressel Bridge. He wants to put a surface drain in on the east side of the ditch. And he called me last week and he don't think one's gonna be enough. Back when they had seven inches of rain, that whole field was flooded and he don't think one tube will be enough, so he's wondering if we can get a two of them in there, do something a little different. So I told him I was gonna meet with Tyler this week, I get ahold of Tyler because I talked to Tyler after that, and we were gonna meet with Art and look at it, see and figure it out. But, uh, Reitzel's in the area, I can have Reitzel do the work, whatever we figure out to fix.
Yeah.
Is he thinking two different locations or like two sides, side by side?
Same spot.
I'll just put a bigger pipe in.
Yes, otherwise it's deep enough to figure one in.
Well, if you're doing a surface intake, you should have all kinds of fall.
Yeah, you could put a thirty-six in.
I mean, you could go as big as it would need, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't look two pipes side by side.
Cause he was wondering, he didn't think because they put some dirt, it used to be just a, it ran in. And then when they cleaned the dredge out to put all the spoil on there, then they leveled it off, now they have a dam there.
Well, that's where it's supposed to be.
So he wanted to get that taken care of. And then this one's new, Mossback never called me, this is number thirty-five. Um, he's on pack one. And I can give him a call or I'll have B and, or M and W, B and W get ahold of him because it's the same problem with, uh, they took down all the big trees, so all the little sap ones down below, the seeds got a chance to grow and it looks like a forest out there again, the sap ones all along there. So I had B and W go out there and look at Arts, he wants to wait a year. Some reason, don't make sense to me, but he's a professional. You let him get established, it's easier to kill the tree, it's just a little bitty one, it's hard to kill them. But you get a year on them and they're bigger, more leaves, he goes, I can kill them a lot easier, so he wants, he told Art to wait a year and come in and spray them.
I think you can get more chemical in the system if you got more surface area to grab it.
So I'll have him contact, uh, Mossback because it's on the, it's up, it's just north of Arts on the west side of the creek. So I'll have B and W contact him and it'll be the same thing, wait till next year, is that, is that section six, correct?
He's got a broken tile there too.
Yeah, that's on the same request.
On the same request.
Okay, well, then I'll have Reitzel do the broken tile, but I'll have B and W check on the trees.
The trees are on the top.
The what?
The trees are along that top.
They're in a
It's a grass.
Is that what we talked about last week?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, it's not on the bank?
No, this is in a waterway, he asked about, we can, Ted talked that last week and said, well, waterways are not part of the drainage system, and that's his baby, yes. Did you, did you call him last week?
I didn't get ahold of him, but
You did or didn't?
I did not.
You want to get ahold of him, that there's tile underneath the waterway, we're gonna have to do some work on it if there's a depression.
Right, and that's what happened.
Want to talk to him and
Yeah, he just goes right in the corner, Whittmore on the north side.
Yeah, go get, take a probe along and see if there's tile right underneath the waterway.
That have, uh, with the depression, I'll have, uh, Reitzel do that fixing them.
Yeah, and if it's a very long stretch, we, I don't know, I, you know, try and figure it out.
It's, uh,
It's four foot long, three foot wide.
Yeah, that's not real big.
Throw a couple five gallon buckets of dirt and back to your pickup, fill it in.
Four foot long, three foot wide, that'd be that'd be about two tile or one, about one tile busted or both ends of the concrete that go in and sucked in.
Don't know.
Okay, I'll do some checking on that, and if we need to backfill, I'll have Reitzel do it because he'll be in the area.
Yeah.
And that's all I got.
And then sometime again, we still need to
Get all the gears?
Gears isn't in them left, so we can have, uh,
Have Luke just go down and take a picture again?
Well, he's already did, he did the flyover already, we just need to have them come in and have
Be with Luke in the background?
Have him come in here during drains and show the whole board to have a flare up and so you can see what, what they're talking about.
Have Luke come in or have, uh,
Have Luke come in, show, and with gears, and then have Luke run the flyover that he did.
Do you have Gears' number, I don't know. What's your?
Jerry.
Yeah. Nobody has landlines anymore, it's hard to get ahold of people.
Jerry doesn't have a landline, I would think he still does.
Oh, look.
Look, I bet he still does.
Most people you can't get ahold of, I wish they had a cell phone or, or looking.
Yeah.
The tile marketers.
I was just trying to say that.
Do I have a motion for the supervisors to take care of their repair requests and motion by class, second by loss?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried unanimous. All my scratching on the agenda, I don't think I've missed anything except this afternoon.
Yes.
Board discussion. Oh, yeah.
Board report three. Board, I guess, oh, yeah. Okay, I agree with you, we have board reports before we go into adjournment for this afternoon. Mr. Stecker, do you have any board reports?
Um, Doug mentioned it earlier, but meeting with the representative for the pipelines this afternoon, them and Chrisa, um, are to meeting this afternoon. Other than that, that's pretty much it, I didn't have any meetings between last week.
Mr. Casey, how, besides vacation, how was last week?
Oh, I got uh Mogler called me, I was out there, event in the driveway, he called me. Um I think that was it, I had phone calls when I was going for um like Barry Simpson, he wants to move this driveway and put it on the north side of the farm, it's with uh, what's it called? That's might be a very expensive driveway. That's just the and that's all on uh, yeah. I'm gonna get ahold of months and then they split the driveway, if they tear that building inside down and they're still using them, oh, oh, they, they want to put another driveway back there. Well, right now they, yeah, right now they use Bristol's driveway. Or, yeah, they're probably, the owner, if he tears building inside out, they'll have crap there. So Barry's wondering if they could go together, put about that barn, that's, that's what's, they each have access to it. So that's all I had last week. I didn't have any meetings, just had a couple calls on C O T pipeline again and the road department did put um coal mixing the railroad tracks over there, I got a few calls on that, thinking that would get something temporary for now, I'll tell the railroad, get in there to fix it, which who knows what that'll be. That's what I understand, when the guy's working on my house for me. His shop is right by the railroad track, so there's a huge dirt pile with rock in it, and the farmer can't get back there and bail. So he goes, I just picked up the phone, called the railroad, talked to somebody and they said, yeah, go move that dirt, that's fine, it's in your way, just move it, we're fine with that. Go, done, how come we can't do that?
I don't know. Beyond our pay grade, you know, he gotta hold my way and gotta fix right now.
Yeah. No, just uh, well, we sat the picnic, there you go. If you go, nice or two.
Yeah, that was a weekend though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's nice, nice turnout.
Yeah.
Good time, so.
Yeah. Yeah. I, all uh, I listened to a lot of complaining about DD seven last week.
Yeah, I got them.
And that's about everything that I had last week. We are up to the auditor and next week, what do we got?
Next week, uh I think it's the life bit. So we'll be approving all the salaries, appointments, salaries of all the employees in Suits County. Um, before that, Rogers can ask for approval during budgets. Has done that and it will be shows to that'll be first in that now. Then every solution stopped there and you were ring on. And so you're supposed to have big money for DD sixty, but that had been canceled.
That's canceled?
The one for the fifth is canceled.
Okay, that was DD sixty sub one.
So that one will not be done next week. Um, and then last week I was at auditors conference, um, and there's a couple grants, one grant that I'll be applying for from Secretary State Office for a thousand dollars to help with accessibility for the precincts. Um, and then, then there's.
Accessibility.
Well, they are giving a grant of a thousand dollars to any county that is uh asking for it, and it's to pay for a disability agency to come in and walk through the precincts and give you ideas of what you can do to make sure that uh you're meeting the needs. So that's something that I think I'll be applying for that for Anthony Wilson. And then uh, we still have the ten thousand dollar cyber grant that we were given uh last year. There's no end of date as to when we have to spend it by, um, but there is some, some software that I'm looking at possibly using that for, so when I get more information, that's that.
Set through solutions?
No, uh, the one is through Modis, I think is the name of it. And it's uh presen- precinctal official software, streamlined official. So that'll pass. Um, I have the application next week, so also Christie will be in here. Wow, that'll be that is on.
Those are our interviews for June spot.
We have two today and two tomorrow. We got four applicants for interviewing out there and we'd like to hire somebody.
So he got? Anybody else have anything that comes before the Gruddy for Suits County?
Or.
When, it's, it's at the election center.
At one o'clock election center.
Take this with me.
And we'll, we'll have a sign on the outside of the door in case anybody it was in the paper.
Seeing nothing else, I will declare the meeting adjourned. Yes, and then it'll be a drainage meeting.
Insurance, maybe they wasted the last minute uh.